Meeting will please come to order. This is a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. I now ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kersman.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Plunkett.
Here.
And President Balinski.
Here, so we're all here. We have a quorum. This is a special meeting of the Board, not a regular meeting of the Board, so we won't have the full agenda tonight. Normally, a meeting like this would probably be a committee of the whole meeting, but this evening, we will be asking the Board to vote on a referral item, which is Item 4, and as such, we decided to make this meeting a special meeting instead of a committee of the whole, so we could do that. This meeting is being conducted remotely via the Microsoft Teams software, and I would ask Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to please explain some logistics to the members of the public that are joining us tonight.
Okay, thank you, President Balinski. Sorry about that, was having my own technical difficulties there. So, everybody should have joined the meeting tonight muted, and when President Balinski calls for public comment, those joining us with the Teams client can toggle their mute status by clicking on the microphone on the meeting toolbar, which would either be up towards the top right of your screen or possibly in the lower middle, depending on how you've joined the meeting. And those joining by audio conference dial-in can toggle their mute status by pressing *6 on your telephone. Once again, you press *6 to toggle your mute both on and off, and only attendees can unmute themselves. Nobody can unmute another attendee, so you've got to click on the mute button for yourself. And if you have any technical difficulties, you can always go over to the YouTube livestream chat area, put your comment over there, and we'll read it back into the public meeting record here. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Skiles. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a gubernatorial disaster proclamation, which was issued by Governor JB Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state amended the Open Meeting Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Village Board during a gubernatorial disaster proclamation, so we are conducting our business tonight in compliance with the provisions of state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local access cable channel 6 and on the internet on our YouTube channel, and I will read that URL. Mr. Skiles referred to it, but the URL is youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live, and with no spaces or dashes or anything like that. So, once again, www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. Recording of the meeting will be archived on the Village's YouTube website, as we do with all of our televised meetings. Now, a remote meeting obviously requires a different mechanic for public participation, so to ensure our residents, business owners, and other interested parties have the opportunity to participate in the meeting, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. So if you sent an email to publiccomment@willmet.com prior to the start of the meeting, your email has been provided to the Board members, and it will be included in the minutes of the meeting, but it will not be read during the meeting, and I know there were a number of emails that we did receive. Members of the public who are watching the broadcast can participate during our designated public comment periods by submitting comments through the YouTube chat feature, and as Mr. Skiles said, a member of the Village staff will read your comment to the Village Board. For those of you who have connected to the meeting via the Microsoft Teams software or via the telephone at the appropriate time, I'll ask people to speak up if they would like to make a public comment because of the logistical difficulties of not being in person together. I'll first just ask people to identify themselves as someone who would like to address the Board, and then I will assemble a list, and I will call on the individuals person by person for their turn to speak. For people speaking during public comment, they will be allotted three minutes to address the Board, just as they would be during an in-person meeting. All comments from the public, regardless of how they are received, will be recorded into the minutes of the meeting, into the meeting minutes, and I am going to mute everyone right now. So everyone, including staff and trustees, have been muted. Please keep your connection on mute until you are ready to speak. So before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on willmet.com before a meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that we received. Hang on one second, I'm muting someone. Okay, that seemed to solve the problem. This week's packet, again, it was a special meeting, so it was not a complete agenda, but the packet contained 101 pages. The next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment, but since this meeting has only one topic, I'm going to defer public comment until we discuss that topic, which is Item 3. So I'm going to move on to Item 3, Discussion of the Retail Sale of Adult-Use Cannabis. And let me start this discussion by saying, the Village Board is not here tonight to vote to approve or disapprove of the retail sale of recreational cannabis in Willmet. Tonight is just the first step of a public process, and what kind of process? How are we going to start this process? We're going to start it with information and education, so there will be a presentation by the staff. There will be the opportunity for questions and answers with the trustees and the staff. We will have public comment, and this is really the first opportunity for the public to comment on this matter, and then we will move on, we'll make a decision on whether to move on to the next step. So, we're not approving it tonight. This isn't even the first step of approval. This is the first step of the overall process. And I think the wording on the first slide that Mr. Berman will go through, I don't think it quite captures what we're trying to do. It perhaps should have been written in the negative. Rather than if the majority board is generally supportive of permitting, then we should refer it to land use. I think the way it should have read is, if it's clear that a majority board are not supportive under any circumstances, then we should not refer it to the Land Use Committee. But that's not a question that we'll be asking trustees tonight. The question that will be in front of us at the end of the meeting is, should we refer this to the Land Use Committee, appoint them as a special zoning committee to basically work through the details here and bring them back to the Board? Okay, so with that preamble, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Berman. He has a presentation for us.
All right, thank you, President Balinski. And before I start, just to let the Board know that we do have a full complement of staff available tonight. So Police Chief Hal Murphy and Deputy Chief Collins are here, Corporation Counsel Jeff Stein, and Community Development Director John Adler, as well as Eric Hallgren and Alex Artiago. So if there's any questions as we're moving through the presentation, for any of the staff, please jump in, and we'll do our best to answer them as we move forward tonight. So to President Balinski's point, we've actually tweaked the language of this first bullet point to more clearly state how we're going to proceed. So if a majority of the Board does desire to seek additional information regarding potential locations and regulations, then we would refer this to the Land Use Committee. And as President Balinski discussed, this is going to be a methodical, deliberate, transparent process, and it's going to be a multi-meeting process, and we're going to gather public input throughout the time that we proceed via email and solicitations in our e-news and at these meetings and at our committee meetings. If we don't reach a consensus tonight in terms of our next steps and we want more information, we can also certainly schedule another special meeting as follow-up. So in terms of background, this all started in the state of Illinois in June 2019, when the governor signed the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. Shortly thereafter, the Village Board took several actions. Most significantly was placing the moratorium on the retail sale of cannabis in Willmet until later this summer. You know, the real reason for that moratorium was to buy ourselves time, to get additional feedback from the community, to learn how our residents felt about this matter, and also to learn the experience of other communities who proceeded sooner than others, and some of those being Northbrook, Skokie, and we'll talk a little bit about some of those other communities as we move through this presentation. In July 2020, the Board voted to place a referendum on the November election ballot. These are the referendum results. You'll see that 56% of those voting voted in favor of or supported the retail sale of recreational cannabis, and Willmet, 43% or almost 44% opposed. And 556 people who cast ballots in that November election did not answer yes or no on this Nearby communities, so this is a map we've seen before when we've talked about this at previous Board meetings, when we were discussing whether or not to proceed with the referendum. We've updated this since our last discussion, and actually, even since the time this map was put together, there's been an additional change. You'll see Park Ridge in the southwest corner that's in yellow on that map, they are now green. So their Board approved the retail sale of recreational cannabis in Park Ridge earlier this week. So what we wanted to highlight on this slide were the communities that have changed their position since we last discussed this at the Board level. So Highland Park approved by a vote of 4 to 3 in October the recreational sale of cannabis, and they did that in their industrial zoning districts. Park Ridge's approval is spread throughout various zoning districts in their community. Morden Grove, since we last talked, approved recreational sales in December, and Northfield also recently, just about a month ago, approved recreational sales. These communities did not conduct referendums like we did, and our memo does talk in further detail about the communities who did conduct referendums and their statuses. The other communities remain unchanged. So in our area, Northbrook, Deerfield, Evanston, Skokie, Niles, Buffalo Grove do permit it. The others, especially to the north of us, do not permit it at this time. An important factor for the Board in determining our next steps is, of course, public safety. And we've reached out to communities that currently allow recreational sales. We've also reviewed surveys from the Northwest Minnesota Conference, which represents many suburbs up our way, and what we've found is that there have not been any public safety concerns at this time. That doesn't mean there won't be issues in the future, but the information we have right now indicates that there are no public safety concerns. The one adverse impact was increased traffic and parking, generally in the first couple of weeks that a new dispensary opened, and shortly after those issues dissipated, and they were no longer concerns. Financial impact, I know when we read about this in other communities, that's a primary driver for other communities. I know we've talked here, it's one of many factors that we're going to be looking at. If we do allow adult recreational sales, we would receive 5% tax on each sale. We did previously enact a 3% local cannabis tax. That's the maximum allowed under state law, and our existing sales taxes would also apply. What's really difficult, and I think frustrating for everyone, is that there really is no good way to determine a solid projection on how much a single dispensary would bring to a community. And the primary reason for that is that the Illinois Department of Revenue has very strict protocols on the type of information municipalities can release regarding a private business. And if you have less than four of a certain business type in your community, you cannot release your cannabis sales data, for example. So these communities that have one, two, or three dispensaries, they have to roll their reporting up into their sales tax numbers in their public documents to follow state law. So what we were able to do was look at the budgets for these communities, look at their transmittal letters, and see what they're projecting, but they're not providing actual dollar figures, and the numbers really vary widely depending on the community. So the average in those projections was $350,000. For context, at 5% tax, that would be a business that's doing $7 million in sales a year. We did speak with some industry representatives as we were seeking to learn more about the industry through this process, and they do project that statewide sales will exceed $3 billion by 2024.
Mike, just a quick question. The average budget of 350, does that contemplate per location, or does that include, like Naperville's number was like $1 million based on three locations? Is that an average for a community, or do you know if that's an average per location?
Yeah, I'll step in here. That is an average per location, so for Naperville as well as Arlington Heights, we factored it out, saying that it's $250,000 per location, and Arlington Heights were $33,000 for Naperville.
Okay, and just as a relative point, it would be my understanding that if we had a business doing $7 million of taxable, you know, sales taxable revenue, that would be perhaps our highest or among our highest sales tax businesses in the community?
It would be very significant, yes. For a community like Willmet, it's unusual for someone to do that level of volume.
Okay, thank you.
And lastly...
I have a follow-up question on that. So I just want to make sure what you were asking. Bob, so this $350,000 is based on assuming $7 million in sales tax revenue, is that what you were saying, Mike? Or is that the average?
It's not, so it's the average of projections in other communities. So...
The 7 million?
I'm sorry?
The 7 million is the average?
No, because some of them may have a 2% local tax or may have a 1/2% home rule sales tax, so that's how much they anticipate their community will bring in. So it was just an example. If we were to project $350,000 in tax revenue based on our 5% sales, it would need to be 7 million.
Got it, thank you, okay.
Any other questions at the moment from the trustees? Please feel free to unmute yourself and just pipe up here. No need to raise the hand or wait for me to recognize you.
So moving on to regulations, this is certainly a tightly regulated industry in Illinois, more so than most or any other retail businesses in the state. I won't read through all these, but a couple of the important ones here. So not only do you have to be 21 years of age with a valid ID to purchase, but that ID is also scanned before you can enter the facility to ensure that it's a valid identification card. All sales are reported to the state, and there are certain reporting requirements that are in the memorandum to the Board. There has to be at least one security guard onsite during all operating hours. Exterior windows have to be shatterproof and tinted, so you cannot see inside to the facility. The product has to be locked in a secure space, including a reinforced vault room when the dispensary is closed. So a lot of dispensaries now are looking to purchase vacant bank sites where those vaults are already in place. We don't have a lot of those sites in our community, but you'll also see, that's a good example, Old Orchard, I'm sorry, in Skokie, near Old Orchard, that was an old bank site. The Northbrook site, just to our north, was not an old bank site, and they had to then build a vault room as part of their construction. Sales are not permitted drive-through vending or delivery, it has to be in person, and deliveries have to be made separate from the public area of business. This is just some of the regulations, there's a lot more involved, and this does go to the Land Use Committee, we can certainly review those regulations in greater detail if there's questions. Then at the local level, you know, there is some latitude in the state law in that municipalities can establish their own regulations. Zoning and the locations that a community would permit them are within our purview as is the zoning process. If we do proceed, staff recommends that we use a special use process, which gives us an extra level of review if an application does come forward. You can also put in place distances to sensitive uses such as schools, parks, houses of worship. There are no distancing requirements in the state law. There previously were under the Medicinal Cannabis Act in Illinois. I think it was about 1,000 feet from some of these sensitive uses, but with this new recreational retail law, those requirements have been removed. Communities can limit the number of dispensaries, so you could have one, two, three, or more. And then you could also discuss whether or not to permit onsite consumption. We've found in our research that is highly unusual, and certainly in talking with the police chief from a public safety perspective, that would not be recommended. This is something that if we move forward to the Land Use Committee, we can get into greater detail and talk about some of these and how we'd want to look at them. So in terms of a timeline or next steps, if the Board refers the matter to the Land Use Committee tonight to review potential zoning locations and other regulations, the committee can meet on February 24th, and we anticipate this being at least two meetings at the Land Use Committee, so we'd meet again in March. What that means is that a more comprehensive discussion at the full Village Board level would not come until April. Reason being is that our second meeting in March is overspring break, and even if we have a quorum of the Board, we don't feel that's an appropriate time to have this type of discussion when members of the community may not be in town or may not be attuned to our meeting schedule at that time. And then, you know, if the Board reaches consensus that we simply don't want to study this further, we're not supportive, we would put in ordinance on a future Board agenda just to make our current moratorium permanent. That's the extent of the presentation. As I mentioned, we have a staff here to answer any questions you may have, and I will stop sharing my screen here, so we can get back on.
So I would open up the floor for questions. If you have questions, members of the Board, just identify yourself and ask away, and I understand, you know, a number of questions were included in the packet and answered in advance by the staff, but if you'd like to review some of those, you're welcome to do that as well at this time?
And President Balinski, if I could jump in before questions, one thing I left out, especially on that last slide, was related to location. So when we come to the Land Use Committee, staff is intending to come with recommendations on regulations, but also location. We think it's important for the community that we shrink the universe that we're looking at, at least to start with, so that we can really focus on specific sites. And in our research and our discussions with industry representatives, Eden's Plaza was identified as the best location. It's not the only location, but it's considered to be the best because of its proximity to the highway, because of the traffic volumes in that area, and because of the parking at Eden's Plaza. Parking is really important to these businesses to make it work. So that's how we're going to proceed at the Land Use Committee. We can certainly look at additional locations based on that first meeting discussion at the committee level, and then what we would do is use e-news and our other outlets to inform the community of other locations we'd be looking at. We feel it's very important that residents know exactly those locations that we're looking at, so they can provide informed feedback to the Board.
Yeah, I think that's important, again, because we're not, what we ultimately have to do is approve a change to zoning, which means it's location-based, and, you know, clearly, our zoning code provides for different zoning districts to have different permitted uses, different special uses and the like, and this would be no different. Mr. Berman and I did talk about the question of location, and let's just, I think it makes sense to sort of bring some of that commentary into the public domain, but if you don't allow for sort of the premier retail sites, my understanding is you're less likely to attract the best operators, and obviously, we would want one of the top operators to be operating in the village. And other locations such as Plaza de Lago, Green Bay Road, the Ridge Road Corridor, Fourth and Linden, or Skokie Boulevard just wouldn't be as attractive to someone. And by the way, if one of the motivators here, which is one of the motivators, is potential sales tax, you know, if you hide the location in a hard-to-get-to place where the population isn't going to be and isn't going to access, you're not going to see that either. So, Mike, I think I'm sort of restating what you told me earlier, and would you agree? Is that sort of what you described to me in terms of why Eden's Plaza really has to be the focus of the Land Use Committee's discussion?
Yeah, if we want, if we say yes to a dispensary, we want a successful dispensary, and the most likely location for a successful dispensary that's going to then produce the type of tax revenue that these other communities are seeing, the most logical place is Eden's Plaza, and we certainly don't want to create parking problems. And that's an issue in some of our other areas as well. So if you look at Green Bay Road, where we permit medicinal cannabis dispensaries, we don't have very good parking. If you look at Westlake Plaza, we do not have good parking whatsoever. So we want to make sure that this is a good use for the operator and also for the community. And I think that's why we're focused on Eden's Plaza initially, but certainly can dig into other areas based on discussion and how the Board wants to look at it.
Trustee Dodd, I see you leaning into the camera, so you have a question?
I do have a question, just, I was leaning in. Thank you. So just going back to the location question, I do think it's actually kind of helpful, President Balinski, to kind of talk about our questions by area, you know, location, security, you know what I mean? I don't know, just in terms of putting some focus, so, but, so in terms of location, so, you know, I heard what you were saying, so just, and I'm not in favor or not in favor, I'm just trying to understand. So like, an area like Green Bay, for just a lack, I mean, if a location where it does have its own parking lot, is, you know, is it more about, is it more about there's just not enough traffic, or, you know, enough such that people will come to it? And my guess, second to that, is, is there like a, is there like a grade? Grade's not the right word, but of dispensaries, you know, like high-end, class might be, you know, high-end, middle, you know, and so, and is that what we're worried about?
Yeah, I'd be careful about that, because there's just not a lot of information, right? So we're making some assumptions that may not be accurate necessarily, but I think in talking with the industry representative, Green Bay Road, they felt that was already in the Evanston area, where Evanston has, you know, one or two dispensaries, that that wouldn't lead to enough sales to justify a dispensary locating. Now, that doesn't seem logical, because Eden's Plaza is very close to the Skokie location, but their thought, or their thinking from a dispensary standpoint is they see that as a different market. You know, and that, you know, I have trouble getting my head around that, I think a lot of us do, because it's so close, but it's a different interchange on the expressway. It's actually more accessible to the expressway than the Skokie location, it's much closer. It's got more amenities, so if somebody is going to go shop at the Walgreens or Bed Bath &amp; Beyond or something like that, the Skokie one doesn't have those amenities as part of that center, so there's different reasons.
And you could pick up a cheeseburger at Five Guys on your way out, right? You know, it's the planning ahead.
We don't allow, we would not allow onsite consumption. I think that's important to say. You know, so Plaza de Lago, for example, you know, if we said we're going to zone it in Plaza de Lago, you would probably get a very small boutique store because of the low traffic volumes, and that just may not justify, you know, approval in that type of location. So there's a lot of unknown factors, too, that, you know, because this is still early, and, you know, we're going to reach out to additional industry representatives as we move towards these Land Use Committee meetings. We've talked to one, somebody else may have a different opinion. So we want to learn some more and get some additional information to the Board, but we want to make sure if we do this, that it's going to be successful, it's going to be the right type of operation for our community, and that it's something that we can be proud of moving forward.
But I, just, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
But as a follow-up to that, Mike, I mean, I've talked to a couple of residents, you know, just a handful who kind of asked me this, and some of them said, well, you know, if it's like a boutique-ish type, you know, cannabis, recreational cannabis retail, that's a lot different than, you know, a massive, you know, greenhouse that's in Skokie, and some residents might feel that differently.
So, Trustee Dodd, if I can jump in here, when you say boutique, I'm not exactly sure if you're referring to what's called a craft grower. The craft grower is similar to like a brew pub. Think of your local brewery, Lagunitas or something, versus Budweiser, right? That's when you say boutique, that could be an attraction, but part of that is there's an onsite grow, and they need a certain amount of space just to grow the product, and then their particular product is then sold at the dispensary, and they often want onsite consumption, so...
Got it, okay.
There's a lot of problems to that particular type of...
Okay, I didn't understand that.
But, Trustee Dodd, were you referring to boutique, like Corporation Counsel was referring to, or are you referring to like boutique hotel, like a cute little establishment that, you know, sort of has high-end amenities and things like that, or neither?
I was only referring to boutique, because I thought that's what Mike Berman was, he said something, and so I was like, so I picked up on that, because that's the language that I heard, and I was, and so I'd asked a question, what do you, I don't even, I don't even know what I was referring to, to be honest, I was more...
Let me, boutique's not the right word, right? It's really a small, small store that's not attracting, you know, the tax revenue from outside of the community, I think is what we're talking about. So, you know, some of the questions from the trustees are, what are the average sizes of these facilities? And they span the spectrum, right? So Eden's Plaza has a lot of vacant space now, but I don't see it being filled with a 10,000-square-foot dispensary if we say yes. You know, in our discussions with Newport just yesterday and asking them this, and we're going to invite them to attend the Land Use Committee, Newport is the landlord or the owner of Eden's Plaza, you know, if this is approved and they find a dispensary that they can, that works for them and that's interested in coming to Willmet, now, they see this as an infill between a fresh market and a Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, right? So taking those smaller spaces that are harder to rent to a bigger retailer. This isn't something that's going in the Carson's box, was kind of the response back from the Newport team.
And the plan is to invite not only Newport, but of course, the public, but also, you mentioned these industry people, you would invite them to the Land Use Committee so that the trustees on the Land Use Committee could sort of get firsthand, you know, answers from industry professionals, people who have firsthand knowledge of how things are working and what would be interesting and desirable.
We're going to try to find the right person to do that, yes. We're going to try to find the right person to do that, yes. So, you know, yes, we're, we're going to see if there's, you know, a lot of, a lot of these industries have, you know, state associations or national associations. We think that's probably the most appropriate person to come before the board, so that we're, we're not, you know, predisposing an application if somebody were to submit it after, you know, the fact that they were associated with an actual business. So we're going to try to find the right person to do that. And we're also, we also want to talk to real estate developers or brokers and understand, you know, the impacts at a, a center like an Eden's Plaza. Does this adversely impact the recruitment of national retailers that we need to anchor that center? If it does, that, that is not the right location for our community. If it doesn't, okay, then. So there's a lot of factors and information that we need to learn. And there's no rush for us to gather that data. This is going to be a deliberate process to make sure we're fully informed when we make this decision. And just because Eden's Plaza is the best location from an industry perspective, doesn't mean it's the best location for Willmet. And it doesn't mean it's the only location in Willmet, but we think it's the right starting point for this discussion.
I'd like to, just kind of what Mr. Berman was saying about national retailers, just in advance. If we do have that, I'd like to know if any national retailers, you know, have in their leases that they will not be in a location near a retail cannabis store. And, you know, national retailers, and I'd like to know what our retailers right now in Eden's Plaza would, would think about that. And I mean, I, we obviously want to attract the right kind of retail. And, you know, not necessarily your average strip mall, you know, love those kinds of service retail, but, you know, not, not service retail, but like the service industry and strip mall, we want to have, you know, a higher-end retail. So I think that's just really important to be prepared with some of those answers as we go into that land use meeting.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll do our best to gather that information from current tenants and tenants that we see as prospective tenants to the center.
Mike, let me just ask, because we're, we're talking a lot about Eden's Plaza, but would we get that specific on Eden's Plaza, or would you say the area? I mean, what about right across the street at West, I think, what is it called? Westlake or Westlake?
Westlake Plaza, yeah.
Plaza. I mean, there's a bank over there. If that bank vacates, is, is that going to be an option?
Sure. So we're talking a lot about Eden's Plaza. One, it's its own zoning district. So it simplifies the zoning process to, to a great degree. You know, we, we could, that has the highway access, it has the traffic volume at Westlake. And our talks with the industry reps, and Jeff is the one who had talked with them, and he could explain a little bit more. The concern at Westlake Plaza was the parking is just very difficult. And this would only make that much worse, potentially. The bank, I think, might have its own parking lot, though. And I don't know, you know, John Adler's on here. I don't know if the bank is a part of that Westlake Plaza zoning district or if that's owned separately. So that could be another site we'd want to look at.
So, but that would be the whole point of this land use committee. They're going to look at all of it, not just focus on Eden's Plaza.
Correct.
We're, okay.
Right. But I think, I think it's important to include Eden's Plaza upfront in the conversation.
Totally agree. I totally understand.
Yeah. If you're not willing to put it in Eden's Plaza, then you really should think hard about what you're willing to do.
Yeah. And President Blitsky, I think that's a good point to the community, is this is just a start in the process. If we, if we can't find a location that we're even comfortable with, then we, we have our answer. And it's to, you know, convert our moratorium into a permanent one. So this is going to be a really good process as we gather that additional data and work on, work, work towards the solution that's right for our community.
Right. And, and I think it's important, as we work through this process, there, there will probably likely be some iteration, you know, Eden's Plaza and something. Well, it's important that we give the community plenty of notice when we're, if we're thinking about a new location that we hadn't previously discussed or hadn't been on an agenda or otherwise, because it's just not fair to say, oh, and, you know, yesterday, we decided to add this location and not have sufficient time for public comment and, and people to really understand what we're trying to do here. Look, this is, it's, it's complicated. And there are unknown factors here that we have to deal with right now, because this is brand new. This isn't, hasn't been around for 10 years. We don't have that kind of expertise or experience here. It's been in some communities that far. And, and I know, I believe some of that research was done in the past around experiences in places like Denver, you know, Colorado, other, other states where this has been the norm for, for longer. And if there's learning from those associations, those associations or from those state governments, that would be of interest. You know, oftentimes, people are required to do an annual report, you know, to state government or something like that. Those kind of resources could be very helpful to the board as well.
Yeah, but we can certainly do that outreach. And what complicates this for us, more so than other communities, too, is we don't have a plethora of vacant sites where you can have a standalone establishment like you have in Skokie or Northbrook, that doesn't have these factors of national retailers or, or leases and whatnot. So we're, we're really limited in our locations, and that does make this more complicated. And most of our locations are near, are very close to residential facilities or schools, whether it's downtown or Green Bay Road or Plaza del Lago. And we know folks may have concerns about that. So it's, it's not a simple discussion for us like it is for some other communities.
Right. We're just smaller. We have less, we have fewer business districts, you know, just in terms of, like, the square footage of our business districts. It's not like Northbrook. You know, that's almost three times our size, you know, so.
One more, okay, one more thing. I, another topic, I mean, there's, there's the retail. And then another topic that I have some concerns about, I think, whether or not we have our own dispensary is in public safety education, that I, I think we, we need to kind of have a discussion about, you know, what is our public safety education, and do we need to do more? And maybe this is a discussion with Chief Murphy, with staff, but, you know, I, it's, I, I think my comfort level is better knowing that there have not been any safety concerns. But, you know, everyone's been home for the last year. And there, you know, you can see that there's not, not a lot of people on the roads, not a lot of people driving, and you don't really hear much about cannabis use and driving. Not a lot of public education about that. And I just think that, you know, going forward, I mean, if they're expecting whatever, how many billion in sales in the state of Illinois by 2024, I really think that we need to discuss, you know, public safety education, driving children, accidental use of edibles that are contained in packages that look just like chocolate, just like gummy bears. Anyway, I may be off topic in terms of location, but I just think overarching, this is something that, you know, we have a duty to, you know, to address.
And, and let me follow up on the public safety question. I mean, trustee Sullivan, you would know, is, are there, it's still the case, and it could change, obviously, with federal legislation, but it's still the case that these are cash businesses, right? Like, you can't, like, the, the electronic banking community can't participate in these businesses.
Yeah, well, I, that, it's not legal for a bank to bank these companies at this point because of the, it's, even though it's legal by the state, it's not legal at the federal level. So the way we approach it is, if we would bank them, we would technically be harboring a crime because it is illegal at the federal level. So I believe they're all cash. For this, I have not been in one, so I would not, I cannot confirm that by experience. So.
I, I wanted to just add something to what trustee Plunkett said or Santa said, which is around the safety. So I had an opportunity to talk to some of the senior administrators at New Chair just in preparation for this meeting. And I actually think, you know, public education, education and just safety and, is an issue for us regardless of what we decide here. And maybe that's something that, you know, we can have the Public Safety Committee at some point look at, because we've got those issues with what's going on in our neighboring communities. And, and I think that's a real, real concern for the schools, to be honest, because I don't think there's a, you know, in schools, and, you know, but just for younger adults or whatever, there's not, there, you know, like, the example they would say, give is, you know, kids have really been taught to know not drink and drive. But I don't know that there's the same level of understanding of, don't smoke pot and drive, you know, or whatever. And so I just, I think we have, just knowing that this is going to be more prevalent in our community, regardless of whether we allow it in our own community, is something that I think we, as a board, should be addressing in terms of communication. I know we did that at the time, Mike, that it kind of first rolled out, you know, when it was first adopted. But I just, I did think it is something that we should really be thinking about regardless of our decision.
I think we should, we certainly should do that, and we will. And I think you bring up a good point about New Chair. This is, this is something we could work on at a regional level or a township level with our neighbors and the township and the high school. We don't all need to create our own different information. We can pool our resources and push out the same information through those venues. So that, we'll add that to our list to get that, to get started and working with our neighbors on that.
Other questions? Oh, let's, trustee Kennedy, was that you? I saw your icon light up.
Yeah, just on the education point, I don't disagree with what trustee Plunkett and trustee Dodd said at all. I think it's a good idea, but I wouldn't limit it to kids. I, I think.
No, that's.
Since, since the legal dispensation of marijuana occurs only to adults, you could assume that if it's coming, I think, from a legal dispensary, it's an adult. And, and I don't know, frankly, how well adults understand use and.
I agree. I agree, trustee Kennedy. And I wasn't trying to limit it to that, but thank you.
I know. I just pointed out.
Yeah, I, I agree completely with that. Other, other questions for the staff or requests relating to, you know, information that the, the board members would like to review, that they think the land use committee should review?
I would, I would like to ask a question of chief Murphy, if he's on the line. Maybe.
I see him online. He's unmuted.
Chief, are you there?
I am here.
I was surprised candidly by the public safety materials that were contained in our packet, that even after all of this time, there doesn't appear to have been any adverse public safety consequences. I'm wondering if you would comment on that, and if you would contemplate that you, whether that, you see that continuing? And if you think that our experience might somehow be any different?
There's no, there's no indication that, you know, in regard to a recreational cannabis dispensary, there's no indication that our experience would be any different than any of these other communities, especially if we do not permit onsite consumption. So I would have no indication that our experience would, would, would vary. Obviously, I completely agree with trustee Dodd and trustee Plunkett in regard to public education, both for children as well as for adults. Right when 2020 began, we did public education talks at Loyola High School, as well as with various Rotary Clubs in the village. And then for juveniles age, we, we routinely or annually discuss, at the eighth grade level at the junior high, alcohol. And then in a, at a subsequent educational discussion, we talk about cannabis and, and drugs. Now, those discussions did not take place in 2020 due to the pandemic, but, you know, we are going to reinstate those going forward. But to that point, yes, I agree that public education could, could definitely be enhanced.
A follow-up question. How, how do your patrol officers deal with this? What, what, what do they see and how do they confront it?
You know, we've been enforcing, well, in reference to driving, we've obviously been enforcing driving under the influence with alcohol and drugs for decades. The difference being is now that there is a limitation with permitted cannabis in your system with the five nanograms. It, quite honestly, it makes it a little bit more difficult because it was, it was fairly black and white before. And the only way that we can test for that is, is through blood. So an officer would have to have probable cause to, to initiate a traffic stop and, and then conduct field sobriety. And based upon specific field sobriety tests, that would have an indication on whether that impairment was due to alcohol and/or drugs. And then they may require a, a blood test, which takes place at, at a hospital.
Thank you.
In your, oh, chief Murphy? In your experience, have you, you or your officers noticed, you know, when you suspect that somebody is under the influence, can, is there a difference when they're under the influence of alcohol or under the influence of marijuana in terms of what you've noticed in driving?
That's a good question. You know, we see more cognitive issues with impairment associated with cannabis. And it makes it a little bit, a little bit more difficult to detect on, on, on field sobriety. But as far as the, the driving ability itself, yeah, there's a, there's a number of differences that, that someone under the influence of cannabis could have. Multitasking, ability to track with your eyes, you know, an unusual, an unusual thing that, you know, that we've learned through the course of this is that the, the association with speed. So individuals who are typically under the influence of alcohol have a tendency to travel at a higher, I'm sorry, at a slower speed, because things are, things are going fast in their mind, and they try to overcompensate, and then they go slow. It's not in every case, but that's in some case. And through other drug recognition experts, they indicate that they have a tendency to see higher speeds with individuals who are under the influence of cannabis, because things are moving a little bit slower in their mind, and they're trying to compensate, and they drive at higher, higher rates of speed.
So I have a.
Learned something new there, right there. So. Oh, trustee Dodd, we might have lost you. You just disappeared from the screen.
I'll ask, well, one more, while she's, while she's getting her back. How close are communities to coming up with a test for cannabis that would be kind of similar to the breathalyzer test for alcohol, to make things simpler, easier, instead of, you know, having to go to the hospital and have a blood test?
So there's, there are units that are in test phases now, which is a saliva test on the street, which is similar to a portable breath test for alcohol. So I don't have a question on how soon something like that would be, you know, approved or accepted. And it's probably going to come down to how those are handled or presented in court and, and court decisions. But that may not necessarily negate the requirement of someone still going to a hospital and, and giving a blood sample. It is, it does seem like a cumbersome process, but like I stated, since we've been enforcing cannabis and drug driving for, for decades, it's a, it's a step in the process that we're used to. But just with this limit, we tend to have a tendency to want to get people to the hospital to get that blood draw as soon as possible.
Chief, a question for you that's a little bit different. Do you know, the, the presentation mentioned that there were a, a security guard is required at each of these? How, how is that individual armed and licensed and the like? Do you, do you have any information on that? And I apologize if I'm throwing a question at you that you're not prepared to answer. Maybe, oh, I see Mr. Stein popped up, so.
Yeah, I could, I could probably answer that one. So state statute requires an onsite security guard that has to be licensed, that, that security guard is licensed through the state as well, not through the Cannabis Act, but through Private Security, Private Alarm Act. An officer or a security guard is not required to have a firearm onsite, but can. And from what I've seen, most of them, most of the security agents are usually off, off-duty police officers, former police officers, and do have the right to carry and do carry onsite. And part of that is, part of the security plan that every dispensary has to go through, that has to be submitted to the state, the Department of Financial Professional Regulation. And they list where the security guard, you know, what company is going to be there, actually, who the security guards are. They go through a back, a second background check, and they discuss whether or not it's going to be armed, where the, where the security guard is going to be located.
Thank you. So it depends.
It depends, but most likely, they're going to be armed.
Okay.
And I know, so I saw the, you know, I was in Arlington Heights, and I visited that one dispensary that was in the strip mall. And they had, you know, a security guard that was outside the building, you know, a little imposing. that was outside the building, you know, a little imposing, standing there. My understanding is that that's not mandatory, but that security guard told me that at least with the company that he worked for, they required, you know, a security guard to be posted outside. Do we know how many companies, you know, have a posted security guard outside the door versus, you know, allowing one inside?
So I, I can't answer how many, um, but what I, but I think it, it comes down to the specific security plan. So dispensaries are not cookie cutters. They're not all shaped like a McDonald's, right? It comes in different shapes and sizes. Some have a vestibule, some do not. Most likely the security plan is an officer has to, or a security guard has to be outside to check an ID to get in if there is no vestibule, if you don't have a secondary lock system. Because someone that's not 21 years of age or someone that doesn't have a medical card cannot get into the, the dispensary without getting checked first. But some places are big enough or some places do have that vestibule system where it's a double lock. So you can walk right in, the security guard's there and you can't get past that security guard because there's another, there's another, another door that's, that's locked. Um, so the issue, the answer is really, it's going to come down to each specific security plan based on the design and the layout of the actual dispensary.
Mr. Stein, could we simply say to them that we don't want security guards standing in the parking lot or on the sidewalk?
Yes, I, I believe we could say in a time, place, manner restriction as well as our zoning restriction that all business activities need to be conducted inside or we don't want security. I do think we would have to allow for the exterior, you know, a security guard to do an exterior check, you know, randomly or however their security plan is allowed. Um, if we did that, that's something we should definitely look into at the land use because there may also be some secondary impacts that, you know, maybe the design will not, that, you know, the place that we, they want to go wouldn't allow for that because they wouldn't have that second vestibule. But other than that, I think we could absolutely, uh, if we decide, if this village board decides to do that, it is a time, place, manner regulation and a zoning regulation. Just, just may have some secondary impacts, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I just, but if, if we decided it was intimidating or that it looked bad or that it harmed the businesses around it, we could just say you can't do it.
Absolutely. I believe, I really, under the statute, I think we have that right.
Thank you.
Of course.
Others? Questions? Trustee Dodd, you're back online. Good?
Sorry about that.
No, no, no. I'm sure, I'm sure you didn't do it on purpose. Um.
I have a question just about, um, do we have any, this is moving off, um, security for a moment, if that's okay?
Sure.
Um, do we have, so do we have any mics, any sort of time restriction here? Like, I know we have this moratorium in place. Is it in place until, you know, we make a decision? Or is it there some point? I mean, I know we have the concern that, you know, if you don't get in early enough, you might not, you know, you might miss the boat. But is there anything, you know, if we feel we need, I don't know, more pub, you know, public outreach or whatever, or more public meetings or whatever, I'm not sure. But do, so do we have a time, you know, a restriction in terms of, is there a moratorium through a certain date? Or I just can't remember?
Yeah. So the moratorium is set to expire on June 30th, uh, of this, of, of this year.
Okay.
There is nothing that would prevent this board from, if it needs further study to extend that moratorium.
Okay.
We have that date. We put a date to, to, to sort of, a moratorium needs an ending date, otherwise it's not a moratorium.
It's a prohibition then.
It's a prohibition. So, but we could extend it if, you know, six more months if there's more information that's needed. Uh, there's nothing stopping us from doing that.
And if it becomes just this, you know, if we decide we're just not ready now, if, so let's just to say we don't, we say right now, we don't want it and we make it a prohibition, I guess, or whatever. And then just, you know, in five years that these become no different than, you know, a liquor store, for lack of a better word. Can we change that? Or so would we always make it a moratorium?
Well, no, you, you, you could say right now, tonight, we don't want them at all. And then a year from now or three meetings from now.
For next week.
Yeah, three meetings from now, right? You could say we want them. Um, the only issue would be ever is if we say yes, and then a dispensary has relied upon that, has begun operations, has spent money. Uh, basically it's called detrimental reliance upon our actions. We could not stop them from operating if we changed the law. Now we would stop any.
If they have one and we change our law, you're saying?
Yeah, they would be grandfathered in, for, for lack of better words.
Okay.
That's the only, that would be the only issue that would come up with that.
Mr. Bravon?
Yes.
So, uh, at our last discussion, you had, the village had been approached by one potential, or at least potential interested party. Have you had any other interested parties contact the village since?
I'm not aware of any. Jeff or John, are you aware of any additional?
So we, we've had two, what I would call very soft inquiries, and that includes the one that you're referring to. Um, essentially was it, is it going to be allowed or is it allowed? We're interested. Nothing beyond that. Uh, and the answer I, I gave was we're, we're looking into it. I should know by June 30th is what I said, so, but maybe longer now. But that's, that was the two soft inquiries.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
But do we know if the owners of Eden's Plaza have received any and have they conveyed that to us? Or have they, we just not asked them the question? Because I would assume since, most people are seeing that as a good site. Most people are probably going to the owners and asking, can we put this here?
So I've had two discussions with the owners of Eden's Plaza about cannabis. One was probably a year ago and then one was yesterday. Uh, and they, it was more about, you know, how, how do you look at it at your center? How does it impact your other tenants? Um, they did not indicate that anybody had come to them seeking to locate there. And in the discussions we've had about the type of tenants and the retailers interested, a dispensary has not, uh, been one that they brought forward to us at this time.
So I, what you're saying is, as, as Newport, the owner of, of Plaza Lago hasn't, has certainly hasn't gone as far as to say, hey, we'd really like you to approve this because we, we want to put someone in. They haven't said they couldn't, but they haven't like, you know, said, hey, we're really interested in doing that either.
Correct. Yeah, they, they've certainly not asked us to allow it. Um, they've indicated that they don't, at first blush, they don't have any concerns in terms of its impact on the center, recruiting new tenants or current tenants. Um, but you know, that, that was just a very high level discussion. Uh, and I do think they see it as an opportunity for what, you know, what is probably a stable tenant that pays fairly high rent. So from a business standpoint, I, I don't think they're opposed, but they're, they're certainly not pushing and they don't have anybody lined up to bring in.
Right. Mike, you mentioned earlier. Go ahead, go ahead, trustee Kersman.
Thank you. You had mentioned earlier that the challenges with us getting financial data to know exactly what the opportunity is for Will Met. Is there any way we can be creative in working with either companies or municipalities to get at least estimated numbers that could help us inform what our potential opportunity is?
Well, for the municipality, it's a misdemeanor for the staff who have that information to share it. Um, so I'm not, I would ask them and put them in that position. You know, I think as we talk to more industry reps, uh, we can ask and see what information they're willing to provide. Some may be, you know, willing to provide more than others. It's certainly a question we can ask, uh, as we move forward.
I feel like that's really an essential piece of information that we're missing. Like, just a thought of mine is there is a number at which if it's simply nominal, you know, why upset 43% of our residents potentially? I'd like to know really what the opportunity is. Um, and to the extent that we don't have that, it, it really makes it a challenging issue. Um, and, uh, but, you know, I guess every other municipality faces those same challenges as well. But I would like to try to address, I'd like to troubleshoot, troubleshoot that as best we could.
Sure. And I think the other municipalities who, who started this early and said yes, we're generally relying on the projections from the industry, which obviously are going to be, uh, painted favorably to get approval. You know, as I recall, in the Northbrook discussions, uh, Greenhouse had projected, I think $10 million in annual sales at that location. Uh, it's my understanding they're, they're on pace to exceed that significantly, at least this year, uh, until maybe more licensers are out there. But I do think we'll keep in mind that any, any data we get from the industry, um, is clearly, um, you know, just one data point in the process, but something we'll, we'll ask.
This, this, the state is reporting sales and maybe there's some, um, you know, estimation math you can do based on how many, you know, on average, we had this many, you know, cannabis sales days, store days in 2020 or, or in the month of January, we knew there were, you know, 65, I'm making up a number, 65 locations open. And they said, we did X number of dollars in sales. That could give you at least potentially an average. You never know, the state may be more willing to give you averages because you're not sort of disclosing one, two or three, you know? It'd be really interesting. Like what is the, what have the North suburban Cook County dispensaries do on average in January? That would be an incredibly interesting data point to trustee Kersman's point.
I like your line of thinking on that, President Bilinski. I, I, that's better than I could come up with, but I think that's a great i- idea. Um.
I do retail for a living, you know?
So I, I think we, you know, we'll work on doing that. I don't know if we're going to be able to get regional specific data, but even if it's statewide, we can divide it by the number of licensees. And, you know, for the, from what we've learned, um, the square footage of a facility doesn't not necessarily make a difference in terms of the sales volume. So I think that could be an informative data point for us, um, as we, as we make decisions moving forward. So I'm, I'm sure Eric's excited to do some of this research. This is right up his alley. Uh, so he'll get working on that.
Yeah, I just happen to think that the 350,000 feels, feels high. Um, and so I would want us to have as refined an expectation as possible. When I think about Naperville and where they're not pinched on all sides, perhaps with other, uh, dispensaries around them, um, you know, I'm just not sure that's the one that we should be, that should, that we should be working from. And I think the dollars do matter in, in this, at least as far as I'm concerned.
And Naperville is 100,000 plus people, right? I mean, yes, we have the communities around us, but they all have them too. I mean, it's, it's, that's a different place at the end of the day, to your point.
Sure. And just to clarify, we're, to clarify, we're not making an estimate. So we just took the average of what's out there in the budgets because we cannot come up with an estimate at this time and we don't want to guess. But I think we'll, we'll try to do what President Bilinski suggested and see if we can hone in on that a little bit more.
Yeah, I do imply a shortcoming by staff. You guys put together the information that you had and, uh, it's appreciated.
And we might be able to triangulate around it, Mike, you know, where you got, well, this data point suggests this, this data point suggests that, this data point suggests that to, you know, because we're not going to get an exact number, right? That, that's not likely to happen. So.
But along those lines, um, by 2022, we're expecting 500 retail cannabis dispensaries. I mean, that, the number is tripling. So, you know, do we have a pot of money that is now going to be spread thinner? Or are they expecting to have that many more customers? So that's just another thing to think about.
In 2021, there's going to be an additional 115 or so licenses. After that, and those, those have to be given out. After that, the department, the only Department of Financial Professional Regulation has the choice to issue up to 500. They may not issue. And some of those, the department has to look at certain equity and, and certain places that would make sense to give a license. So it might not be 500, it may be 400, it may, may be 500, but it's not a given, all 500 licenses will be given, like, like, like the 75 and then the 115 this year.
Right. But to trustee Plunkett's point, this, this market could act at some point in time so that additional outlets are diluting prior outlets as opposed to increasing the size of the market. Sort of equivalent to like, you know, the casino markets and the like. There, there's, you know, you're, you're saturated and the limit to how many people are going to, um, go to one of those. And if you build another one, it doesn't mean that you've created new customers. You've just shuffled the customers around.
Unless you sell mattresses.
There's always, there's always room for another mattress store, right? It's a head scratcher for even people who do retail for a living, Joel. All right. Any, any further questions for the staff at this point in time? This was very good. This was sort of what I was envisioning, you know, sort of a, a conversation about questions that the staff could answer for us, things the land use committee should consider and, 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 and questions for, you know, chief Murphy and corporation counsel as well. So other, other questions?
Just, okay, one last thought going forward because I know we're going to spend a lot of time in land use talking about Eden's Plaza, but I just, um, I, I think the community would like to know if we are considering any other location. Is any other location an option? You know, maybe we don't want a really successful, you know, high-volume cannabis store. Maybe we do, you know, want a smaller, you know, as trustee Dodd was saying, you know, a smaller little shop and, or maybe that's just not worth it because it's not going to make enough money. But I, I don't want to exclusively talk about Eden's Plaza because, you know, I, I know there's a lot to say about that, but if we say no to Eden's Plaza, are we saying no across the board? I just, I want to know that going forward.
Right. I, and I, I agree, uh, trustee Plunkett, there, there may be some iteration on the land uses committee's part here where, you know, you go down a couple of, a couple of different locations, but we definitely should, the community needs to know what's being considered and have an opportunity to react, even if it's not right from the beginning. If, if that's the path that goes down, that's not a change that you make overnight in, you know, a meeting and a half and, and approve something without having good input from the, from the community. Agreed. Okay. Anything else? I see all six of you on the screen, on my screen at least right now. I don't see anybody else sort of leaning in or unmuting themselves. So, all right. So I'm going to move back to item two, which was public comment. Um, I will give my usual speech on public comment and then I'll ask people if, if anyone would like to address the board. So at an in-person meeting during public comment, individuals are allotted three minutes to address the board. However, as we all know, this meeting is being conducted remotely. So the public comments which were submitted by email, uh, have been provided to the board. They're part of the public record, but they won't be read during the meeting. Uh, so if you are watching on YouTube Live, uh, now is the time for you to submit comments for the village staff to read. Uh, you can find the chat window to the right of the YouTube Live video window. So, uh, YouTube Live individuals, please, uh, start typing away. And while they are typing, I will, uh, ask if there are any individuals who are connected to the meeting tonight, either via Teams or the telephone, uh, who would like to address the board? Uh, so again, as I said, uh, at this point, I will just ask people to identify themselves. Um, I will make a list and then I will go back to people and offer them their three minutes. So is there anyone who has dialed into this meeting, uh, who would like to address the board, uh, at this time? Please identify yourself now. Okay, just, uh, I don't see anybody that's connected via the phone, so I don't have to tell people to star six, um, to unmute themselves. It looks like everybody's connected through the app. All right. So, um, I'll go then to Mr. Skiles. Mr. Skiles, uh, were there any individuals who, uh, made use of the YouTube chat feature to submit a comment?
No comments, Mr. President.
Okay. So I will close a public comment and we'll move on to item four. Uh, item four is, uh, and I, I would ask for a motion for item four to appoint the land use committee as a special zoning committee to determine the appropriate zoning districts and other regulations for cannabis business establishments and medical cannabis dispensaries and recommend amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Can we say so moved?
Yes, you can say so moved. Thank you, uh, trustee Barrow. Uh, and is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Trustee Dodd has seconded the motion. All right. So, um, before we, uh, move on to discussion, I just want to make a comment. I mean, look, the question before us right now is whether we appoint the land use, uh, committee, um, as a special zoning committee to figure this out. Um, the question is not whether an individual trustee will ultimately vote in favor of, um, you know, recreational cannabis sales at any particular location. And so I, I, I mean, at, at, I think it's appropriate to hold your sort of general comments. Of course, everybody can have the opportunity to say whatever they want. I'm going to give everybody that opportunity. Uh, but it seems to me that right now our comments should relate to the item in front of us as a, as opposed to sort of an extended discussion of the, the pros and cons, because I think there's a lot of work to do and we're really not voting to approve any particular site. Uh, it's not, Eden's Plaza isn't in front of us, Plaza Lago isn't in front of us. Uh, the regulations aren't in front of us and the like. So while I will just say, look, personally, I still have reservations about the ultimate approval. I'm fine sending this to land use, have them do their work. Um, because I think there's lots of, lots of things for us to consider, uh, tonight. And as I said at the beginning, we're, we're not, we're not voting to approve recreational cannabis tonight. We're, we're voting, we're beginning the process. We had a public meeting. We talked about the, the issues, the board made, uh, the staff made a. made a presentation to the board. We asked for public comment for the first time, and now, should a majority of the board want to, we will appoint the land use committee to proceed here. So with that, though, I will open the floor to any of the trustees who would like to make additional comments, and after discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. I've got all of you on the screen, and nobody, it looks like they're ready to talk.
I, I, if you want me to say something, I will, but it's, if it's only a question of sending it to the zoning committee, I see no reason not to do that ever, under any circumstances. So I, I don't think there's much to talk about. Sorry.
No, 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 that's actually perfect, trustee Kennedy, because I think everybody's just going to nod along and like, it'll be like, okay, trustee Kennedy captured it.
Okay.
All right, so if there's no further discussion, I'm looking up again. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to appoint the land use committee as a special zoning committee?
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye, aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
And President Polinsky.
Aye, so the motion carries, the land use committee has been appointed as a special zoning committee. We'll move on to item five, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I move the picture.
So moved.
Trustee Kennedy was first there, she got, she started first. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, trustee Sullivan has a second. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll on the motion to adjourn.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
And President Polinsky.
Aye, so the motion carries, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for participating in this special meeting of the board, and we'll see you all on Tuesday at our next regularly scheduled meeting.